... Paula, thank you very much. Mary Jo Radkowsky here. Mary Jo Radkowsky here. Patty Jacobson here. Laura Lee in. Amy Lockton. And Amy Lockton at the top here. Has the meeting been notified to the public or to your open hearing loss? Yes, thank you. We are now at public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board about something that's not on the agenda?
I would.
Come up and state your names and. Make a phone call.
Oh, I can.
This goes right into the kit that goes by this. That is not a real good question.
My name is Amanda Sharp. I am a parent of Grace Ingbruck. She is a junior at Black River Falls School. There has, I have concern about the way that a situation involving my daughter and another student is being handled by administrative staff, and I am not sure at this point how to approach it. Please tell me, is there some kind of time limit to these things? I want to be respectful, but I do feel like my voice as her mother needs to be heard because she is unable to speak for herself right now. So I, out of respect for everyone, please tell me what the limits are in this forum in terms of time and content.
For public comment, it's a three-minute period, and we choose, we have chosen in that to bring names in a situation like this. Have you, you said you've addressed it with your principal?
I have adjusted.
The next step is the superintendent.
I'm there on that.
Okay, then it is appropriate that you could address the board about the situation.
Okay, perfect.
Because we do not, but we can't take action tonight, so you didn't.
I understand that. I'm aware of Robert's rules of orders, board policy. I will be using the name of my child only. So my daughter has been a student in Black River Falls School District since kindergarten, her very first day. She, this has been the worst year of her career as a student, and much of that she is responsible for. And let me start by telling you her story. At the beginning of the school year, she received a Tiger Way violation for an incident occurred that occurred during the summertime. She stepped out of my, out of her father's home and came back to my home when I was away for weekend, had some friends over, and unfortunately, friends invited, friends invited friends, and it turned into a huge party. There was no police involvement, there was no evidence of drinking, there was no reported alcohol consumption or anything illegal had occurred at this party. There were no drugs, there were no cigarettes. There were no pictures of fletch that were ever presented. But her father, when law enforcement would not step in and punish me because she came to my house, decided to turn it into the school, into the athletic director. Grace said, yep, I had friends over. We were hanging out in the yard and in the house. She was issued a Tiger Way violation for not reporting a party because everyone made the logical assumption that these were teenagers and they could have possibly done some alcohol. So she was issued a Tiger Way violation and suspended for two cross-country meetings. She accepted the consequences without lying, without arguing, and she moved on. Her second offense, she took a hit off of a friend's jewel. She had a badly strained ankle, she was in pain. They were in the library, her friends said, here, try this, it will help your ankle feel better. Well, that was dumb. She did. She got caught. She did not fight, lie, whine, or complain. She took her athletic code violation, accepted the additional suspension, she accepted the consequences, respected, and she moved on without complaints. Summer months after that, she had friends over to our home. Older friends showed up with alcohol. Rather than turn the older kids away, one of them who was of age to purchase alcohol, she allowed them to stay. Someone called law enforcement who came to investigate. Of the 25 people that were at my home, only six were drinking. Unfortunately, three of them were juvenile, were minors. Three of them were over the age of 18, but under 21. The rest of the partygoers were hanging out in my basement, playing pool, playing Mario Brothers, listening to music. Grace, remembering back to the incidents in the summer, immediately reported the violation herself. She stepped forward to the athletic director and said, this is what happened. She was honest, she took the situation on with an intense amount of integrity. She said, I was not drinking. And she was not. She was breathless, it was negative, but police report reflects that. She turned herself in, as she was told back in August she should have if anything ever happened again. So she came forward and she did. She was issued a Tiger Way violation and suspended for two more, for two hockey games. She was also questioned relentlessly about her younger brother's presence at this party and was told, tell the truth, you know your brother had to be home. Her brother is also a hockey player. He was in a friend's house that night. Again, verified by the police report with no mention of her brother's presence. She was being truthful. She didn't make her friends with beer leave. She should have. She accepted the two-game suspension. Again, no lying, no whining, no complaining. She accepted the consequences, and she moved on with integrity, not blaming anyone but herself for the situation and accepting the full weight of the consequences at 16 years old, again, without complaint. I stand before you today, this situation that we're facing now is drastically different. A picture of her with a jewel in her mouth was presented to administration by a boy who's been bullying her all year. A young man who has made up vicious rumors about her calling her vulgar names like slut, crack whore, and retard. Even though she possesses a GPA superior to his, is taking AP classes that he is not, and it was being considered for a work-based learning opportunity but was not offered to him, he still called her retard and slut. When Grace was called into office to discuss the photo, she did not lie. She could have said it was photoshopped, but again, she told the truth. When she was questioned, when she was questioned and the photo, and shown the photo of herself, the identifying information of the boy who turned this photo in was present on the photo. My daughter saw something that she shouldn't because a mistake was made. An innocent mistake, but still a dangerous, awful mistake that has had horrible consequences, not only for my daughter, but for the young man who turned it in. A 16-year-old was given information she never should have seen, and she acted on it, and she made the truth public. She said, yep, I was juuling, and that's who turned me in for it. That's who turned in the photo. She saw it with her own eyes. Of course, in her 16-year-old wisdom, she talked about it. That boy has continued to lie and accuse her of lying. He has called her a liar and vulgar names all over school. And she was telling the truth the whole time. Administration knew she was telling the truth, and have allowed the student body to harass Grace to a point of being practically suicidal. I couldn't even get my daughter out of bed this afternoon. I begged her to come with me and face the situation with the same bravery and integrity that she's faced her other issues with. She can't do it, she doesn't have the fight left in her anymore. She will not allow me to divulge the names of any of the people harassing her because she feels further retaliation and social isolation. The boy and the staff of Black River Falls High School have presented her as a liar when in fact she is telling the truth. I have all of the proof in my phone. I have messages from this boy's mother, I have pictures of the things that he has said about her on social media. She was telling the truth the whole time. It is slanderous to call her a liar. It is slanderous for administration to allow this to continue and allow her to be called a liar when she's not. And let's further complicate this situation. We've been told the young man who turned in the photo has blamed another for his actions. The person he slanderously blamed happens to be a family, happens to be a family friend of Grace's grandfather. This young man has been working on race cars and motorcycles with Grace's grandfather for two years. Imagine the impact that this lie could have had on this relationship. This innocent person could have lost a friend and a mentor all because one young man can't seem to tell the truth and accept that, and stand up for the fact that, yep, I turned in a photo. I'm not sure how to resolve this situation with any level of pride or integrity at this point, but Grace does not deserve to be publicly blamed into liar, have her reputation essentially her future ruined. This was not the act of a concerned friend or a young man, or this young man who would have owned the fact that he turned in the photo. This was done with the intent of allowing district administration to do not, to do what he could not. Bring down a girl who he is jealous of, a girl who is beating him in many aspects in terms of success, and a girl who has rejected him romantically on several occasions. This boy, who wants to present himself as having such integrity, has posted cruel sexually explicit names of fellow girls, has publicly called Grace a liar in social media outlets, has a history of generally disrespectful behavior towards girls. I am aware of several girls he has attempted to solicit new photos from, but none will come forward for fear they will end up in the same circumstance Grace is right now. Granted a liar, facing punishment for school administration, banned from the activities she loves, and socially outcast. She will not, Grace will not allow me to divulge the names of these girls because she respects their desire to be left out of the drama. She has been a successful student and an asset to the district in many ways. She was instrumental in getting club interact off the ground. She mentors younger students in band and in sports. She is successful in the world outside of school. She is a respected hacking official and lifeguard. She's even secured a job at a world-renowned hacking camp in Minnesota. She was chosen from hundreds of qualified candidates based on the references from her coaches, her teachers, and her supervisors and her child. She has proven herself honest at every turn, in every circumstance where she has made a mistake, she has stepped up and told the truth. She doesn't deny the fact that she had the jewel. She just doesn't want to be called a liar when she knows she's not. That is the most painful part of the situation for her. I challenge you to find a time where she has been disrespectful, unkind, or cruel until she was put in the situation of having to defend herself. I don't know where to turn or what to do with this, but this to be happening is just plain wrong. I have not used the situation and the horribleness of any of this to try to argue her out of the consequences of the mistake that she made, which is the jewel, but to allow everyone to continue to believe and for administration to back, back the fact that this, this happened, nobody wants to own, this was a mistake, she never should have seen it, but she did. It wasn't her fault, she didn't ask for this, but she is asking for the truth to be told, and frankly, I think she deserves it. This needs to be fixed.
Or you think the board could make an action?
Senator asking? I will tell you honestly, I don't know. I know that there are privacy laws that have to be respected. I understand that. I understand that this was purely an innocent mistake. I understand she was never supposed to see that, and she knows it too. And we wouldn't be here right now had she not seen something that she wasn't supposed to see. I can offer far more proof that everything I am saying in front of you right now is Again, I'll gladly, I'll show everybody everything in my phone about this. How to fix it? I don't know. I don't think it's fair for a child to have to face this, to have to be being called a liar when she's not. And the adults in the situation know that she's not, she's not making this up. But how do you do that without violating another student's right to privacy? I don't know. I really don't. I really don't.
If someone follows up with you later tonight or tomorrow to, to step?
She has all of her hearings for, oh, which, by the way, they scheduled her NHS hearing and her appeal board hearing for the same day, at the same time. I don't know how a child is supposed to be in such places at once. This has just been so poorly handled on every aspect. I've, I've had to, I've begged for callbacks, and I've had to, I've had to relentlessly hound the people to get any kind of response at all. No one will talk, I mean, no one wants, no one wants to own this. And I just, I don't know. I don't know.
So I could update the board privately when it's not well covered. They share, that's two where things stand, and you can decide if you feel like it's something you want to take action on. Well, thank you for coming tonight, and I know we went over time. I see it's highly emotional for you and.
I actually, I would, I would like to have an email address where I can send everything I have in my phone that proves what I'm saying is true.
So you can email it to the board. Or you could use Ms. Collins if that is more comfortable.
No, that's fine. Okay. I will send it all to you.
We have some of the student senate here. Yes, we do. I'd like to make a motion to move 8.6 up to the present time right now so the student senate can address the board. Seconded? Um, favor see eye?
Hi.
Um, have student senate?
That was a little conversation to have to follow, I'm sorry. You came to share some great news with us, right? Fantastic. Thanks for coming.
So student senate this year has been, I would say, a fairly decent one. As most of us know, we had a Thanksgiving drive near, two weeks before we went on our Thanksgiving break. And I don't have the precise amount of money we raised, but I know that through the help of all the student bodies and the teachers, just pushing it and pushing it for all of us who participated in this one event, we have raised a lot of food for families that cannot just get the food they needed for a Thanksgiving meal. And I'd say that's probably the most important thing we accomplished this year was the Thanksgiving Meal Drive we did. And then with the help of Vlada Flurchuk, who Tuesday has left us the school district, she also did a diversity week for our school district where Native Americans and also three foreign exchange students, Vlada Flurchuk, Paul and Georgia, presented meals to our student cafeteria and also got us up on, showed us food from their cultures and whatnot. And I'd say that was fairly acceptable, as we got a lot of feedback, mostly positive about the event, and also expanded our views of our, of the fellow cultures we also get here in the school. However, we didn't really get many changes this done, done this year, as I can see, as mostly our, a lot of student body senators from different advisings did abandon halfway through the year. But we did at least get some things done. However, like I said, it was a decent year, and I'll say that hopefully this will be a step, this will be a seed in the ground for next year's student body senate. And I believe that this, we can go off it and make something even better for next year.
You didn't start by introducing yourself. You tell us who you are, please.
I'm Peyton Tyson. I was formerly the vice president of the student senate, and I'm guessing I'm the president.
Your president has been in election, then tell us. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And so that was going to be my question, do the, do they elect their student senators in spring, or does that wait till fall?
Actually, right at the beginning of the, when the first ever student body meeting was, we have people email us or young funders asking to, for four elected positions, and we have the student, I think, this year we had entire student body vote for vice president, president, everything. Luckily, they chose me as the vice president, Vlada as the president, but as I said, she left, and now I'm taking her mantle as president. So we just had an open election for everyone to be part in.
Excellent, excellent. For the board's information, Peyton was also one of our state qualifiers in forensics, and so public speaking is something that he certainly has some experience in this year, right? So congratulations.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Any other questions for you? How many student senators do you usually have? I've forgotten.
Um, how many, do we have a number for how many school teachers we have in high school?
Well, just a little.
Forty. Forty? Then we would, at the beginning, we had forty.
Senators, okay.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, like I said, most of, a lot of them ditched halfway through the year, which I would, then I would probably go on to congratulate those that have stuck by us through the hardship, because we were planning to have a, with the February storms and everything, we had missed out a lot of planning for especially diversity week. However, we did manage to pull through that, so.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your leadership. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry for running a little bit late, but.
Thank you so much. And you're welcome to head over to our state, whatever your pleasure.
Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
If we move on to Junior Achievement, I'd like to give you a award presentation. Sarah?
Peyton.
Right here is fine. I think you have missed saying that, me standing next to you.
Good evening, and we're here to present the Junior Achievement Hero Award to Ms. Anderson this evening. But first, I'd like to just make some introductions and a little background on Junior Achievement. I'm Rachel Brisberg, and I'm here in a dual role, so to speak. I am representing Junior Achievement for the Northwest Region, which is here, Wausau, and everything north, so we cover a wide, wide range of geographical area. But anyway, I'm here to represent their board in representing, presenting the award, but also the credit union. Co-credit Union has been a big part of bringing Junior Achievement to the school district as well. Part of my role at the credit union is financial literacy, so I'm here for that. With me tonight is another Junior Achievement volunteer from the credit union, Cassie Francio, also our photographer for the evening.
She's my familiar reporter as well.
A little bit about Junior Achievement. Junior Achievement is dedicated to giving young people the knowledge and skills they need to own their economic success and plan for their futures. We do this through programs of financial literacy, workforce readiness, and entrepreneurship. Junior Achievement provides curriculum and support. The community provides the funding and the volunteers, and then the school district lets us know what ages and programs they're interested in. So we work together to make this happen for our young, young people. Here at Black River, you've been involved in various programs throughout the year, and three years ago, the focus here became on career exploration. We do this in the fall of the eighth grade year to get them started, and it not only fulfills the state standards, but it prepares the students for enrolling in the high school courses and activities that they start in December and January of that year. And over the three years, CCUs provided the funding and the volunteers for the program, which leads me to our teacher, Ms. Sarah Anderson, and our nomination for her and her strong support of Junior Achievement and assisting in helping keep the program viable here in Black River Falls. Two years ago, she advocated for a change in the way we scheduled the Junior Achievement lessons so that it would better fit the learning style of our eighth grade students. Ms. Anderson and another teacher were both willing to give up classroom time because they saw the value in the JA program and the students hearing about career exploration from members of the community. This schedule is a one-of-a-kind, and it's been very successful here, so we appreciate that. Her volunteers love being in her classroom. It's clear she commands the classroom and elicits respect from her students, and her support of JA shines through, and we see that transfer through to her students. In this program, the students create a personal brand design, and Ms. A displays her own JA brand design that she created and shares it with her students as they go through the program. She generally stays in the background and is always willing to share relevant experiences when she sees an opportunity to help the students connect with the lessons. She regularly incorporates experiences from former students, like when they ask her to do references, which I hear a lot from what I hear, and making references to current TV shows, popular culture, or sports figures. She knows her students in ways we do not, and she can add impact every day to what we're presenting. This creates a great partnership between herself and the volunteers for connecting the lessons to the real world. For recognition of her support, Ms. A was awarded the Junior Achievement Hero Award at the Northwest District Gala last week with attendance of over 225 people. Since Ms. A was unable to attend, we asked if we could present it to her at some function at the school.
Almost 228 people.
And we're very pleased that we were able to be here this evening. So thank you, the school administration, for supporting the programs, the board for your role in that, and especially to Ms. A for her continued support. Thanks.
Oh, sure. Okay, I'll follow you.
Sorry. So I didn't see your name on either. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks. We move on to the two gifts. So the gift that I wanted to highlight tonight is a large box of leather scraps. And if there's one thing that Ms. Dolls slash Ms. Sweeney is really great at, is finding awesome uses for recyclable goods. And so I will never forget when I was now major principal, she went to the landfill up in Eau Claire and asked them to save Clorox soap bottles because she needed them to make 500 fish. And so she really is very resourceful, so. D.B. Jones Sadlerie from Sparta donated a large box of leather scraps, so we'll have to wait with bated breath to see what they're going to create with those treasures, so.
Value is 500 dollars.
That's kind of high value. We started trying to purchase leather, so good for her.
It is a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second? There's the eye. Eye opposed. Okay. Thank you. Next is Focus on Purpose, Bill Connie here for the center committee art department.
Good evening, my name is Connie Elston, and I'm a cross-categorical special ed teacher at the high school, and I'm just here to tell you a little bit about a project that I hope will end up being a cornerstone project for my portfolio for the acceptance of my special education license, and I say that with a little bit of a smile, and some of you know the backstory of that, but I won't bore you with those details. But this is a picture of myself with my kids at Christmas time, and right now, at this point, I'm doing this for three years, I finally feel like I can smile genuinely, that I really truly, you know, understand the world of special education. But if Joe wants to go on to the next slide. Starting this out as a social studies teacher three years ago, the world of special education was a total blur to me, and I felt like I was often swimming in alphabet soup because the acronyms were, you know, just went on and on and on. But as time went on and it all became clearer to me what special education meant, especially at the high school level, where it's key for us to focus on that transition then into the community. Inclusion, this was a perfect slide when I found it, inclusion is what stands out to me as a special education teacher. And so, as the next slide will show, even when I really didn't know what I was kind of doing, I started out wanting to include the community. I was a volunteer for many years while my kids were attending school, and so right away, I connected with a hub over at the New London Center, and then that has been just very super wonderful to work with, and she always lets me use the side room, and we set up things with volunteers, and so community engagement through the arts was something already in the back of my mind. Well, as the next slide shows you, Paul and I went and took a trip to Door County this summer for the first time, and we stopped at the Graffiti Barn. And if any of you have had a chance to be there or go there, you'll see the next slide shows that they do have an art gallery inside. And they have a community mosaic project that they represent or, you know, present to the public. I think this last year was their 12th year. And they have lots of visiting artists from, you know, the country, so they actually use this as a fundraiser. They have people come and paint these little canvases. It stays on display all summer long. They sell their canvases for $20 apiece, and so you may get a canvas from Little Susie down the, you know, the street, or you may end up getting a canvas from a renowned artist from New York or something that may typically sell art for $500, you know, a print. So as, as I look at this, and you can even see there, this is just kind of a small macrocosm of what that looks like, so I'm so happy that it all turned out. But the minute I saw it, I thought, wow, like, this is great, like, Black River Falls is perfect for this. We have such an eclectic community, and I feel like we support art in lots of different ways and in lots of different avenues. So back in August, like, the wheels started turning, and. And quite honestly, until last Tuesday, right before the art show, I wasn't quite sure if it was all going to come about. But as you take a look at the next slide, Jill, the whole way through, I kept on thinking to myself, okay, the old adage that a picture paints a thousand words. Okay, if that's true, you know, what could 100 pictures paint? And it's actually more than 100, but, you know, that ended up being 120 pictures. But as the next slide shows, I feel like inclusion. This is an opportunity for not just my students, but citizens with differing abilities to come together to do a really fun project and yet have their work all together. Last Tuesday at the high school art show, high school, middle school art show, the high school and middle school art show, excuse me. One of my kid's canvases is in here, and she was so proud. She came up to the board and she's like, "There it is." And she's like, "That's mine," and she's like, "I'm an artist." And she said it with such confidence and like such joy in her eyes that I thought, okay, it was worth all the work. Like, that is what I was hoping to achieve. So the next slide, then, that's what was born, obviously, through this whole idea of inclusion. And I guess I kind of got ahead of myself, Jill, there, so you can go on to the next. To make this happen, there have been lots of events that have been put together. Of course, having my kids paint in my room was super easy, and in some of the other special education classrooms, Ms. McKeith has been really a great partner in this. She has taken some students in her gen. art classes and had them paint. The next slide will show that Ms. Sweeney, or I mean Ms. Doll, I still call her Ms. Sweeney, she hosted or helped me host a district-wide event where students showed up. And in the next slide, you can even see your very own school board member, Mary Jo Radcliffe, there, that helped out with painting. There were events downtown hosted by Revolution, Reflections on Water. The Hub had an event. And so all of these events together then end up creating what we have in front of us, at least one of the boards. The next slide, can see how it kind of all started to come together. Mother's Day weekend, this is what I spent doing, my time doing, putting these on the board, the little pieces of Velcro and stuff. The next slide will show that it was designed so that each board could stand by itself, but there are three separate boards. Giving a little plug for Dr. Kabasa and our Nexus program. The boys out there, two of them in particular, and I think even Kyle Van Rutten did a little interview of them, which I will be really anxious to see what they had to say. They were the ones that designed and made these boards. So Dr. Kabasa approved having the special education fund funded. The wood and the project are the pieces that went into that. But if you take the time to look, the boys did a wonderful job with the direction of Steve Teeples and Brad Meyer. And then, of course, Dr. Kabasa, I'm sure, was probably in and at too, because she's always jumping in. But so there are three different boards. The next step, you can see them all together. They have like community art mosaics on two of them, but separate messages down below. So they can all be together and not be real redundant in their message, but stand separately. And the hope is, all summer long, these boards will be on display at different locations throughout the community. So I already talked to Tammy Peaslee. It will start out in the library on the week of June 10. And so every week, I volunteered my husband to help me, we will be moving these to different locations downtown. And so ours is not, our project is not meant to be a fundraiser. It's meant to be a community builder. So at the Carner Blue Festival, they will have a little kind of art event, and then that will be when they will first go on sale. And we're only going to sell ours for $5. But if you do buy a canvas, you will get possibly mine, or maybe you'll get Mary Jo's, or Susan Sampson has a canvas that's in one of the collections as well. And so the Downtown Association, I've been working with them. They would like to have another event in August that will be celebrating art. So that will be the date that the canvases will be distributed then, for those people that buy canvases from that date in July at the Carner Blue Fest until the actual distribution. When a person purchases the canvas, they will either make a commitment to come back to that August event, which is what the Downtown Association is hoping, so that they can get people to come back downtown, or they will put on their canvas or on their sheet an address within city limits that it could be delivered to. I'm hoping then, full circle, that I can bring my kids back into the picture in the fall, and that possibly through a work skills class or a life skills class, then we can go out and deliver them to the people that haven't had a chance to come pick them up. My next slide would just show, this is one of the canvases on one of the other boards, but this was a definition of belonging that really meant a lot to what I think that this project is hoping to accomplish here, is that belonging is the innate human desire to be a part of something larger than us. Which brings us back to that final slide, which is just us. And I mean, I think that our kids in our classrooms have a really easy time feeling like they belong to a family, and I think that we do a great job as educators to make them feel that way. But once they graduate, sometimes that doesn't always happen. And, you know, I feel like especially some of the kids that I have in my classroom might feel isolated and might not always feel welcome in different places in the community. So I'm hoping that a project like this will give them that chance that all summer long, they can travel to different places and hopefully see their piece of art, feel like they're a part of the community, and know again that we support inclusion through the arts. So Dr. Severson asked if I would come, and that's my little plug. And I'm just hoping that it all stays together and, you know, stays complete so that we can see it through, and so, yeah.
Tell us about the lettering on the board.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Dr., not Dr., Mr. Rayburn. You love it if I give him that title. Mr. Rayburn at the high school worked with a couple of his kids with their die-cut vinyl cutter, the vinyl cutting machine. So they were the ones that were able to put that together. And there's one more piece to it. We're trying to create like smaller oak, Brad Meyer, I just, is it Meyer or Miders?
Miders, and they're almost done.
Okay, so little square oak-framed boards that if businesses would decide to, that they wanted to support us, that they could actually have that on display all year long in their business, that they were supporters of this project. And then I'm hoping that maybe we could also work with maybe Mr. Cassidy's groups, that they could maybe make little brass plates, you know, just try to include as many parts of our school community as we can. So I don't know if you have any questions? And I still, you know, still in the process of trying to work through all the pieces. So if you think, hmm, I don't know if that's going to work, I definitely wouldn't mind, I feel like, the inputs on something to make it a better project.
That's why I invited Connie, because I feel like it's just such a fantastically generous project to give to the whole community. And so I wanted to make sure that all of you guys were aware of it, so when you see it downtown, you can speak very proudly to how they were created. And it's such a neat idea. I've interviewed Connie a lot, and I didn't come back with an idea like this. Good for you. Very good for you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah. And I'll pick that up, Dr. Severson, tomorrow.
You know what? We'll deliver it. We'll deliver it. Do you want it at the high school?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I got your husband's number. I'll call, no, I'm just kidding. We'll make sure it gets there.
Employment recommendations.
All right, we are moving. So principals are busy interviewing, which is fantastic because everybody would love to get these positions secured before too much time passes and these people go elsewhere. So we are very excited to share with you some of the people that we have hired. So I will share just a little bit of information. Brandon Jar, our new assistant principal, he comes to us from Whitehall. He told us at the interview, and I've never heard this term, he is a Pidonian. Have you heard that, from Pigeon Falls? So, didn't know. So he impressed us all with his made-up vocabulary right out of the gate. No, we're very excited to have him. And he's, while he's certainly, he's still teaching up there right now, he's getting on board for lots of summer work and so on and so forth. So you may have heard about a new football coach who was hired for football coaching but did not have a teaching position. Mr. Vengen is that individual. And due to some resignations at the middle school, he absolutely wowed that committee during his interview to be a social studies teacher. And so we're glad to bring him on board as well. In addition to these positions, hot off the presses today, we have a new math teacher at the high school for Mr. Young's retirement. David Pardo, perhaps you are familiar. He has worked with the swim team for many years. He recently got remarried, and he's had, oh, two kids graduate from the district and another one who's currently working for NASA. So David Pardo, we're excited to have him. He's currently teaching up in Chippewa Falls at McDonald's. So and then we have a graduate coming back as our high school counselor. Her name formerly was Libby Braggie, now it is Libby, I don't know.
C. Card.
C. Card or Secard, Libby C. Card. She's currently a vocal music teacher in the Alma Center School District and has gone back to school to get her school counseling degree. And she is very excited about coming back to her alma mater to take up that counseling role. And so Libby home is excited to have a new partner in crime. So those two are both brand new today.
How many positions do you have left for the new project?
A fair amount. And to be honest, this is that season that there are people looking. And so the principals always get nervous when they're asked to write letters of recommendation. But sometimes teachers just want that in their back pocket in case, and they're not really sure, or we're just not really clear on that. So we have a few, but we're.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the new hiring recommendations? Any motion to approve the employment recommendations? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we discuss the future.
Great, and Ms. Kamelos here.
You probably didn't get all my information. I did get some extra today. This is more the original version of this trip that I'm proposing for high school students. It is a science trip in that it goes down to the Galapagos Islands and has an environmental spin on it. Would you like one?
She wants to eat, so we're good.
So last summer, I speak with Sarah Helverson, her president. She has done a lot of these tours with EF Educational Tour. And I'm a traveler myself. I do a lot of traveling, mostly in the United States, though I did get to go to Europe last summer. And she, the possibilities that this company brings. And so I was thinking, well, where would I love to go? And one of the things that I teach in both in my biology, my AP Biology, my AP Environmental Science, and my wildlife ecology is I talk about climate change. And we also talk about evolution. And evolution was born in the Galapagos Islands with Dr. Barham. And right now, climate change is really hitting the Galapagos Islands. And so as someone who talks to my students about each and everything that comes up in terms of climate change, it really concerned me that I may not see the Galapagos Islands before the diversity there was destroyed. So I wanted to be able to see that, and I wanted to show at least some of my kids evolution in motion, because frankly, it is happening there now. Some of the islands themselves right now are having drought. And so the finches with the very small beaks and the large beaks are the ones that are being selected for, not the ones in the middle. And that's called disruptive selection. And I quizzed my AP Biology kids on that just a little while ago. So to see that happen, and at one time, you thought evolution happened in such a long period of time. Well, it doesn't. This is just over a few, maybe three, four years. So evolution is happening there. And so getting to, that's the background. So I talked to Sarah about it, and she said she used this company. And I've been trying all year really to get it going. I scheduled this year. I had too many classes. I should have said no to one of them, but I had too many.
I twisted her arm. I'm sorry.
And so I was just kind of, and right now, I, I'd say the last couple months, I finally can get this organized. So I've been talking to this Katie Kuchin. And this is a nine-day trip. It's the Galapagos Islands. It would be in the end of next year. If you look at it, the last sheet kind of, well, the second sheet talks about what we would do. And it would be flying to Ecuador, and we would fly. The price right now is flying out of Minneapolis, but we can change that to fly out of La Crosse if we wanted, and that would cost probably about an extra $150. Or we can take a motor coach from La Crosse, because sometimes parents don't like, you know, they're hurting their children there because we don't do it by school bus, of course. Anyway, it's a nine-day trip. You do spend one day in Ecuador on the mainland, and then kind of on the way home. But most of the time is spent on the island. Most of the food is also provided. Day three through six, all meals are provided. And on the other days, breakfast and supper are provided. Sarah has used this company a lot. She's gone on many trips. She really has a lot of confidence in it. She says they take care of everything. There is what they call a peace of mind program. So there is, besides myself as a chaperone, depending on the number of students, I can have a chaperone for every six students. And that chaperone is paid for by the company. They'll give me training before. So sometime during this next year, they will send me off to do some training to become a better tour guide, because I haven't done it except for myself. And so there are other things that the students can add. But if we go to that last, second to last page, it talks about the price. So you were just on that. So for students, it's $39.10. And frankly, that is kind of steep, but I don't know if you've ever looked into traveling to the Galapagos yourself, it's $10,000 to $15,000. So this is amazing. And I can take adults with me. I can take, I mean, you can come as a paying adult. I'm serious. You can come as a paying adult.
Did you see the hands go up here? Throughout the room.
And it would cost you $4,360. So we can do that as a school. I mean, this is for this school. I can also take students from other schools. So they want, they usually, what they usually do, she took a trip with Milwaukee, and I think there was a La Crosse school this spring that actually went down to the Galapagos Islands. They usually group several schools up, going to the same place, about 40. So if we get 40, then we would have our own, but otherwise, they would put other schools together. So the program price includes that round trip airfare, and it is from Minneapolis. I confirm that with her. The hotels, they have all private bathrooms, and there's some information on some of those hotels previous. It includes breakfast and dinner, but it does say on days three through six that it includes all those meals. Besides myself, there's a full-time tour director who speaks the language, of course. There are daily activities. Sarah says they keep you really busy. She has to almost get her kids, like, we got to go now. We got to go now. And so she really likes that aspect of it, because frankly, teenagers and free time, not a good thing. Again, for students, it's $39.10, and for adults, it's $43.60. And if I look at the last page, these are some of the questions that you sent me, Dr. Severson. So again, any student in our school district and other school districts, adults may also come, including parents. Adults must submit to a background check, though. The chaperone ratio is 1 to 6. Right now, it's me, my daughter does want to go, she's 20. Oh, she's a good, responsible adult. Other than that, I'm open, and the cost is there. Now, there are extra costs, and a little bit, they're always there. And so I asked specifically what they were, and one was tipping. But I guess EF Tours tells you approximately what you need, and you collect it before you go. And then the tour, myself, would tip whoever is to be tipped, the bus drivers, the ferry people, whoever that is. And so the students wouldn't have to worry about any money exchange once we're there. If we want to add La Crosse Airport, that'd be about $150 to $180 more, or $88 for a motor coach. And Sarah's doing a motor coach down to Chicago. Her trip is leaving from Chicago. Now, there is also the Global Travel Protection Plan for $165. And this is with tour cancellation or interruption, accident, illness, different things like that. As an adult, I would probably do that, but that would be up to, you know, the students. As an adult, I would probably do that, but that would be up to, you know, the students. Anyway, fundraising. So I asked Sarah about that today and she said she has offered it to her students, but nobody's ever really took her up on it. She says she presents to the parents and the parents go, when they see the price as like two hundred and sixty dollars a month, they go, I can do that. But I do have, I have students that are interested in, I've talked about it in my green tea meetings and some of those are interested in some fundraising opportunities and they would like to keep them kind of green fundraising opportunities, the rubber ducky thing is something they would look at, reusable bags, bags and metal straws. Also, EF Tours also puts a fund me site up for the tour, so if anyone would like to donate there, that would also be an option. In terms of immunizations, the contact that I have with EF Tours just went on this tour and she said she did not have to do any other immunizations. They do have, they are responsible, though, for their own passport, there are no visas to this country, so we would be open there. But things, you know, things do change. Anyway, this is what I'd like to do and I'm hoping you'll let me go. The students, too.
Students, too. Questions? Any questions?
I just wanted to say that my daughter went with Sarah Halverson through the same company and it was fabulous, like, I even reached out to the company, I had a few questions and talked to real people and they were super knowledgeable, so it was super easy, we did the payment plan and so just wanted to throw that in and I got the company, it's awesome.
Always with something like this, you know, we are concerned about every student having an opportunity, but you presented to everyone interested in coming, is that always...
Yes, yes. It will be offered school-wide and as I said, the fundraising, I'll work with kids, I mean, too, we can, I suggest to the kids, you can always ask for Christmas presents, grandmas, you know, grandma, I want to go here. So I think, but to be honest, three thousand dollars is a lot of fundraising, so we'd have to, I mean, somehow they'd have to figure out, we'd have to figure out something, but I'll try to make that a reality if they really want to come. There is a non, to sign up is ninety-five dollars and that is non-refundable, so the kids have to kind of make the commitment and they sign up for it.
How soon do they have to sign up?
They do not have to sign up until the fall.
You said there was no special immunizations needed.
No.
Other than what they already have? Are they required to have immunizations that are non-refundable?
No, they're not required.
It's U.S. currency there, too.
Is it? I have gone that far.
I feel it's capital of yours. Which is nice.
Yes. And they would also, I guess they did the money for students if they want that, capital of yours, so have to be...
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you for coming today. Is there a motion to approve the...
Oh, my God.
All in favor? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? We'll look forward to hearing more about this. Tiger Investment Club, you're in.
There were a few of us who were at the Tiger Investment Club and you saw there was the annual report was in the... I guess as a highlight, I'm just impressed with the amount of members that they have to have divided into two groups and the amount of girls, I remember a time when there were zero girls in this club and I think they did a very good job, you know, keeping this going and...
I guess last year's plan, though, as I'm looking at it, my kids is there. It's not in, Tiger Investment Club this year.
They didn't do much to that.
Sure, good. So next year, we'll see. So I included it in your packet, I was not sure if people wanted us to go through it or if it was just there for your review and several of you took the opportunity to go listen that night, it is whatever is your pleasure.
Good?
Okay. Great.
All right, so there was a lot of information in your packet on two material adoptions. So we can start with, I think phonics was listed first in the order, I don't know if it, whatever one you want to grab is fine. So as kind of usual, when I write up these adoptions for you, I wanted to give you background of our process as well as kind of a related and how it kind of fits into the greater story of what we've been working on. So I don't know if you have any questions or if you'd like to highlight any one piece of our process, we've talked about it kind of heavily at Student Success Committee across the year, so I don't know if I'll borrow it or maybe I'll chime in with it, but...
I think you presented a lot of background and the materials you gave us.
We heard it over several different times, but yeah, it was all included there, I felt.
So a real quick version, the CPM resources for the high school to be adopted for next school year and then, I don't know, I suppose we'll need separate actions for the whole...
It's all listed as one, so they might have to take action and pull them apart if they're interested in pulling one out of there.
I'm just wondering if we are going to now have a math program, it does seem to be good. It seems like it's a complicated road to go and so I know that you've worked really hard in the committee and teachers have worked hard. Is there any way, I mean, we always look at outcomes, so are there outcome data for educational programming, like, if you look at this particular program, do you go back and see where it's been successful, who's it successful for, what is the rate of success?
We certainly did reach out to lots of the districts that utilize this program. It is very popular in the state of Wisconsin and so I think, I can't remember if the reps at twenty-five or something like that, school officials in Wisconsin use this program and so we did reach out to, I think I listened in there, four different districts that utilize this program and also lots scheduled and have somewhat similar size to us and so they've definitely seen some changes in assessment data, big state assessment data in the area of math, both in data form, but then also anecdotally, they really feel like students can talk about math and justify their thinking about math, which is a really big deal, not just like instead of the algorithm, or I can pick the right algorithm, but that I can really, they really have that conceptual understanding as well. The other piece that I think is important that we have now that we haven't had in the past is kind of a, it's not outcome data, but kind of an independent review of resources through the ed reports and so that is a company that's been around for about four years and they do an independent review of educational resources and so while they don't necessarily say this is going to guarantee great scores, they really, they look at different pieces. So for math, they look at the standard alignment, they look at the mathematical practices, which is those habits of mind that students should have when they're doing math, that they're really doing it well, so choosing the right tools and making sure they would be able to pick the right algorithm if it wasn't part of the set of problems, if it was just something that they, more like a storage problem type situation. And then usability for teachers because sometimes that's just as important as well. And so I guess those two pieces, both some data measures in other districts as well as, and of course, there's lots of factors in, you know, in that when you contact another district and they say, yeah, we've really seen some turnaround the last few years, you know, and we hope to see the same, absolutely, and so the nice...
I'm sorry, sorry, didn't trouble you, finished.
I was just going to say, the nice part about CPM is they have some wonderful ongoing professional development to support our implementation and so not only is there four upfront days, but then there's additional training, they'll come back and, well, they'll have some regional workshops throughout the year, our initial year of implementation, as well as the second year, they call it Phase Two, and then they also, there's a consultant that will come in and meet with us a couple times and make sure that we're implementing fidelity and that we're kind of reaching some of the benchmarks. They do both practice benchmarks, what should teachers be doing if they're implementing well, and then also student data, what kind of things should we see in student data to know that we're implementing well, knowing that it's a learning here as we implement, and then same for Phase Two and we can also, it is a nonprofit organization and so they will supply coaching for free and so we can contract with them, but it's not at any cost for us for coaching support along the way in Phase One, Phase Two, in further years as well. So there's a good support system there.
That's exactly what I was going to say, the professional development embedded with the, because quite honestly, we think that has really been a significant factor to the middle school adoption that we recently did because the people that know those materials better than anyone else come and work with our teachers on a very ongoing basis and so it's not just all upfront, it's now I've been using this in my class and this is what we keep stumbling over, my kids keep stumbling over this, well, now there's somebody right here who can help troubleshoot that and...
Who's an expert in that.
Absolutely, and the teachers have really been very, very open because it's brand-new materials for them and so you know better by all means and they come and they watch them teach and they give them, so it's just a really, that's been a really nice model for us at the middle school and the middle school teachers have really appreciated that additional coaching and so that really was something that was sought after when they talked about the high school, so that it's not just a, here's the books, good luck with that, but, you know, that ongoing support, so.
Another piece, when we talk about outcomes, it's important to remember whenever you're implementing something, unfortunately, that student outcome data is the lighting data, that's some of the last to come, just because when we're implementing something new, at first it's the teacher taking it on, then the student's taking on that way of learning and that way of, you know, the true implementation and then you'll eventually see in the data, but we're hoping that we'll see some like turnaround for sure because we really want to do something about our math data for sure.
Is there a timeframe where you say, okay, this isn't working, or do you, I mean, how much time?
Most implementations, I think, says three to five years is when you start to see that student outcomes. Absolutely, that's really why we wanted to do all that upfront research and I feel very lucky that we have that ed report to lean on a little bit, not that they'll be all end all, but it certainly is wonderful that they've done extensive research on the program.
And it fits with K three?
That's a great question and when I didn't heavily address the materials, somebody asked, it absolutely does. We did have a consultant that's been working for the math grant also kind of help us in some of the conversation as well. Definitely the middle school resource that was just adopted, this is very similar in its approach in that it really pushes in a good way, kids to really talk about their thinking, justify their thinking, explain their thinking, that's also very similar to our elementary program as well and so we're really hoping to have a lot more continuity in the approach to math and the language and vocabulary and all of that, so kind of how we do math across the board.
Good questions? Any other questions or discussion?
Would you share the sequencing changes for courses at the high school, the double dose that we've been talking about?
Sure, so one of the things in our investigation with some of the other districts that we heard from them, that they have done as a support in math with the rigor of the standards and the just challenges that math instruction, or that math learning presents to students, several of the districts listed there, in the farm, in the water, in the little tin, some here in Little Shoot, they all run some kind of a support class, they all call it different things, but specifically for some of those required classes of Algebra One and Geometry and some of them have even done Algebra Two booster classes, so all students would be heterogeneous and mixed up in Algebra, for example, and then students that have some data, there's some criteria establishes to, that would kind of be some benchmarks showing they maybe would be more prone to struggle in Algebra, then they would also take an Algebra Booster class. And so we have gathered a lot of ideas from all of these districts and we are going to try that in our high school for next year, too, we're just going to start with Algebra One and the focus of that booster class, it's not meant to be extra work time for current homework, it's really meant to be front-loading, so this is the content that's going to be coming up in the class this week. Here are some of those prerequisite skills that perhaps are a little shaky for you based on the demo that we have collected and so we're really going to brush, take those off, brush them off and really get you good and ready and primed for the learning that's going to be happening in the classroom and even some kind of pre-practice of some of those skills so that those students when they're in the classroom really have had some exposure and it's really going to set them up for success, so that's an angle we haven't taken before, so we're really excited about that.
And excited about pre-teaching as opposed to intervening after they're already failing because it was very, very, very different to a student that now you're failing, so you have an extra dose of math as opposed to, let's pre-teach you those skills, because I also think there's a lot to be said about confidence in math class, your level of participation in the class discussion, all that stuff has to do with your confidence, so pre-teaching, front-loading some of those skills and then, you know, the next day I go into my math class with, you know, a larger group and all heterogeneous, elite group, I have much better likelihood of raising my hand and contributing to that class because I was just reminded of those skills that they need. So it takes a block in their day, so they would actually have to block math going on during that semester.
And so the idea is that would work, those, it would either be the same teacher or the high school's working hard to schedule two teachers for Algebra and so those two teachers would either teach the class and the booster and so work together so that it was a common thing, so they could, no, for sure, these are the lessons that truly could be on for these days, so we have a whole day in June to work on that curriculum for that class and so those other districts have been super helpful in providing some of your sort of criteria we use, they're all a little bit different, so I'll decide how to make it our own, but that'll be a nice embedded support for students.
Any questions or just further discussion? Need a motion to approve the K through two phonics and high CPM? All in favor say aye. Oppose?
All right, thank you very much.
Next is the foreign exchange student provider.
If you have any questions, I'm going to answer them for you, but this was a communication that he has been having, did you want to couple of others?
No, I'm ready.
Okay, so it's a communication that he has been having with all the information that we need and they are currently seeking students interested in coming here and seeking host families, it's not like there's a list of kids already waiting to come in, but as part of our core agenda, the board approves providers for this field and we have some experience with Karen through this year, right, and she's been very helpful, or is that not the same Karen?
Different Karen, I believe, this is a different organization. We have, I believe, four organizations that we, the board's approved thus far and those are the ones that we generally brought students in through. This person contacted me and I did a little background work and checked, they have the certifications and the information that we require for our policies. She has contacted some families in the community and has some leads on potential hosts. Our current policy allows, I believe, eight, up to eight exchange students coming into the district and we haven't ever had that many. This year we had three and prior years we've had, I think our largest group was four or maybe, I don't have one year of five. So we certainly have the bedroom and as you heard from Peyton, these students are generally a huge enrichment to our, to our school community, this year especially, the kids love the food.
So are we just approving this new provider aspect?
Right.
Do you see the information required, if anyone has a question? Information for the new foreign exchange provider aspect? All in favor say aye. Oppose?
So wanting to share with you, the high school has talked about summer school and what they offer for many years and we always try to balance between giving kids the opportunity to make up the credits and us feeling good about the level of rigor and expectations they have to meet to make up those credits and many years ago, we had a whole conversation about seat time versus competency, because they failed the class that they were in all semester, does that mean they should be able to come in one week and get the work done and be done, or do they owe us the seat time, does it end with an, na 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 na? We landed at the one week, so what has currently existed is students can come for the two weeks after school is out and they can earn a half a credit each one of those weeks. We have students who take advantage... We have students who take advantage of that in a good way, meaning they come, they work hard, they earn their credit by the end of the week, and off they go. And hopefully, some of them don't have to come back year after year, it's a deterrent and they don't want to do it anymore. Unfortunately, we have other students who play the game and they fail all semester and come and in two days pound out all those competencies, and so they do nothing for eighteen weeks of school, and then in two days they get those competencies done and they get their half credit, they're done. So that doesn't feel awesome to anybody who is trying to work with those kids and hold them accountable. So the high school talked about, I think you guys are aware, they started that after-school tutoring, and so this year they changed the rule that in order to be eligible for that week of summer school, a student must first take advantage of either the lunch and learn time or after-school tutoring, was a step at making the kid invest a little bit in that opportunity for summer school. And then through some conversations with our neighboring districts, Melton, Noro, and Alma Center, we got onto the idea that one of our neighbors does not provide, has never provided any summer school remediation at all. They tell the kids, you can go to Western Technical College and see what they can offer for summer remediation, but we don't do that. We offer the classes to you, we encourage you to pass them, we'll help you pass them, if you choose to fail, you choose to fail. Then one of the other neighbors has done nothing. They allow the kids to re-enroll during the year and they didn't really have a plan. So we reached out to our, Norris was sending their kids to La Crosse, so the kids had to drive to downtown La Crosse. So we reached out to our local Western Technical College, and they said, yep, that's a service that we do provide. And so we talked about what would possibly be available for the summer, and we talked about costs. It's a service that Western Technical College provides free of charge for districts, because they, of course, are wanting to get kids interested in attending later. And so they have told us that they could provide English and math as soon as this summer. And so we, our current summer school budget has not been increased in many years, and it keeps getting pulled tighter and tighter with the new offerings of robotics and all that other stuff. We could stop paying our high school teachers to sit for those two weeks at the end of the school year and send all of our kids down to WTC, and they would provide that instruction for free. They offer one slot that is all things English, and they feel like they can teach multiple English classes during that time, and then they have another one that is math. And kids can earn a half a credit through their work, through them for the summer. But if you look at it, it is like weeks long. They have to come from June seventeenth to August first, once or twice a week if they sign up. And I really appreciate that it's going to take a family conversation and investment in their time to make it down there. I very much appreciate that our local campus was willing to offer it here, so we didn't have to, sending kids to La Crosse would feel difficult, putting that barrier in the way. And it takes us out of that remediation business. Right now, if a student fails an English class, they can take next semester and enroll again in that same English class to try to make it out. But some have decided that that weekend summer is a much easier road to go. So the summer school programming is not something that's been approved by the board in the past, but I wanted you to be aware, because if Western is willing, and they say that they are, we would love to make this change starting this school year already. And the high school administrators had already communicated to families that your child's not eligible for summer school if they haven't been taking advantage of the lunch and learn or the after-school programming. Because it's a whole new ball of wax, we're going to open that up again. Any students that have credits they need to make up, we're going to grant them those credits through this program. So you may hear from people who were expecting a two-day half-credit, and now it's much more rigorous, but we feel really good about that level of effort and commitment that it's going to take for students. And so hopefully that will also be a deterrent to the failing of the classes in the first place.
How long was that? I can't remember.
It runs from June seventeenth to August first. Yep, it is most of the summer. Any questions, comments, concerns about that?
Have they signed up yet?
I don't believe so. The high school counseling office is working on rounding those up right now, I believe.
Right, we've had some, the counselors have had conversations with students and provided them with some information. We just got some of the registration information today, and have sent that out to counselors to distribute widely, and we're hoping to get kids' interest.
Yeah, that's what too. And it does meet the, for example, our Renaissance kids who go down there, sometimes just being on a college campus feels entirely different, and they're willing to dig in and make it happen. And so if that is the end result and they end up, you know, taking some other classes while they're there, fantastic. I mean, summer school and credit recovery isn't about punishment, but it should take some effort and some commitment, because we've already taught that class, we've already given them the opportunity to earn that credit.
So I feel a lot better about this opportunity than getting a half-credit and.
We did too. We did too. That was a great conversation to have with our neighboring districts to uncover that, so. Any questions? Okay, we wanted to see the success committee report.
We did meet, and we did talk about those items, so I won't turn about that, but we did spend some time talking about the progress made and adjustments made to the goals in the five-year strategic plan, or in student successful, successful of the strategic plan. And then talked about the leadership structure and if there are any changes being proposed for that for next year. And then also got an update on the universal screener search. It sounded like middle school had kind of settled on screener and just elementary was, had narrowed to two?
Yep, we decide next week.
And so that was all, other than, I think.
You received the information about monthly report for the expenditures. Any questions, anything you want to pull out? Discussion. Motion to approve? A second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Now we're on the bus bids. Sorry, Hensel's hiding behind the artwork, sorry.
Okay, so every spring we send out bus bids to three Wisconsin companies, and for the second year in a row, only one responded. So I did visit with the people from Nelson a couple weeks ago, they were coming through the state with a new bus that they had, but they were not really able to tell me the cost of that bus. But I know in the past, their buses have been more money than mid-states, international. So as you can see, all of our buses on our fleet right now are international buses, which in a way helps us in the fact that we only need to stock items that fit those buses. You know, we don't have to deal with other companies, and we have three local mid-state businesses, one in Marshfield, one in Chippewa Falls, and one in La Crosse. So I guess what I would like to see is, I would like to make the recommendation that the school board accepts the bid for our mid-state truck for eighty-five thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents for one bus for this school year.
Questions? I'll make a motion to accept that bid. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting at school for a reason.
Not a problem, that would be nice.
I mean, I'm the cracker down driving the roads, you can stay up a little later.
All right. I won't call it real time. Okay, thank you very much.
Open enrollment applications. So just a reminder to everyone that this is that very, very, very preliminary, these are the ones that people have applied during the open enrollment window that exists, and so we really don't make any decisions based off of these, because it, we know that many students apply to multiple districts. We will even get applications out for three different districts that a student is considering. It looks scarier than it is, is the moral of the story, because the same student can't leave you three times. So this is the request for people coming into the school district, and I would recommend approving all of those. And then, and if you want to separate them, we certainly can, but this is the list of people requesting to leave our district to go to others. And so it really is a silly formality that the board has to approve them at this time, but that is the way the legislation was written.
Isn't it the key, Sherry, that a number of these kids, this isn't the first year they're requesting to go? That there's, they consistently live here, but consistently choose to go?
So each receiving district gets, we only make them apply one time and then we keep them. Some districts have different rules where they make them apply multiple times. And so our in, once we accept them in, we don't make them ask again. Some, some places will have them ask, like way back when the open enrollment first started, we said anytime they leave a building, so third grade they had to apply to go to Geppert for fourth grade, and at the end of fifth grade they had to apply to go to the middle school. And we just stopped that because it was silliness. And so there are some districts who still ask for that silliness, and there are others that do not, so.
So, because the.
Not all these are the ones.
Right, okay.
Yeah, not all are, but some definitely are.
Okay.
And, and so anytime you see Northern Ozaki, that is the all virtual school district, and so there's quite a few people who will put that on there so that they have a possibility available to them in the fall, and there's equal chance that they'll be sitting at La Crosse High School in the fall. So this really just gives them possibilities. And you look at the spread, so I just happen to know, this is, that tenth grade is the same student, and so Baron De Soto or. Wow, so that's a wide spread of residents this year, or it might be at our high school here. So again, we don't put too much stock into this because it is so preliminary and the same names appear multiple times, but it does need your. Exactly. Is there a motion to approve the opening of the applications? So. One second. Any more discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Second meeting and all our policies? Anything you want to pull out, otherwise we'll approve them. They're so much easier to read, we've got all the reactions. We went through each of them last time. We've gotten people out, take the motion to approve all of the second meeting on the agenda. Make that motion? So second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All policies changes. You had a number of meetings minutes, and you packed it as well. Any of those you would like to pull out for changes? Motion to approve? A second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Core agenda revisions. Sure. So throughout the year, I try to keep track of things that come up at odd times that feel better someplace else, and so that is what you see before you. So throughout the year, anytime somebody asks me to move something, I just track the change, and then when it's done, we bring it here. So the at-risk plan, that is tough, because Dr. Kibasa usually works with our, oh, can't think of that license, haven't me.
Altad?
Altad, thank you. That was not coming into my brain right now, I apologize. With our Altad teacher, who is not around during July, to prepare that report, and so it just makes sense to move it a little closer to the school year. Budget transfers and revisions, we've tried to do that by June, but depending on when our board meeting is and when the end of the fiscal year wrap-up comes, we end up with some trickling things that would be just best served in July, our new fiscal year of course starts July one, so that would be a much cleaner wrap-up of our previous year budget to wait that long. I'm going to scroll, just a second, see what else. Some of the reports that are normally in June, the staff, like the virtual school's a perfect example, she wanted, we put the school safety drill report to remind everybody that those drills need to be done that month. The virtual school reports, she would love to tell you how many kids were successful in passing those classes, but it would need to be in June for that to happen, so she asked if she could move, and.
I thought deferred expulsion's supposed to be a main. That wasn't on our main one.
No, but did you scroll down further? Because the social worker report, oh, I didn't put them on there, sorry about that. Because the deferred expulsion comes along with the school social worker, and, oh, you know why? Because she just couldn't make it to the main meeting, that's what it was. So on the core agenda is the school social worker report and the deferred expulsion, and they're both Vicky, and when we emailed her about being on tonight's agenda, she couldn't make it tonight. So for this year, she's in June, but I don't know that it will always have to be in June. For this year, they will definitely happen at our next month's meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns? Is there other things that you would like to make sure that we do on an annual basis? This is definitely the most consistent way to make sure that it happens annually. And you made a motion to approve the revised core agenda. Just second. One second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Just a couple things for you. Perhaps you recall that, where I talked to you a little bit about a Jade's program, that if you recall, that Toma is certainly operating it, that was the people who come in, and they provide just a ton of professional development for the teacher on student engagement, and the focus of the program is really on career planning, and some of our at-risk population is who they would be targeting. So when we talked to them last year, they were asking for a financial commitment from us, as well as wanting to do fundraising in the community. We believe that, so we hadn't talked to her all year, and then as we started talking about planning for next year, we believe with some other positions shifting around that we may be able to resurrect that program. And so before we go further, I wanted to bring it up, because last year you all said, oh, we really like the idea, if they can fundraise enough money to make it happen. She has gotten some large commitments from like AT&amp;T and, you know, some larger corporations. And so we are again engaging in that conversation with them, and it could possibly happen for next year, but just wanted you to know that. Also wanted to share that the Tiger Tribune is ready to go out, and the survey that we had talked about is going to be in there. Marty's working with the post office to do it in a, if you recall, we're trying to figure out how could we get them back from people without making them draw them off. There's something called business class that we only get charged for the people who actually use the envelope, as opposed to having to prepay all of those. So Marty's working that out, but that should be coming up shortly, which will be perfect added to get back during summer, that we will afford retreat time to dig through that community-wide debt, was my hope. Wanted to let everyone know that after the successful meeting of the electorate, the land has been purchased, we signed the papers, it is ours, so that was exciting. Also wanted to share that the admin team is participating in an academy through ASAA this year, that where most of us are going down to the Dells in June for three days, and it is focused on setting 100-day goals within your district and then pulling those leadership teams together every 100 days, and really focusing on far fewer goals and high impact, as opposed to the continuous improvement plans that you've seen in the past that have had a large menu of things that they're going to do each year, and at the end of the year, no one feels awesome because they can't check them all off as done, and we look at our outcomes and all, so we're excited to participate, and it's also, this is like the fourth, fifth cohort that they have done, and so we've talked to some other districts who've participated, and we're really excited about that. And that was all that I have to share, so I'll take the buildings.
Ooh, I'll go first. So two, two quick things. So we are wrapping up a ton of assessments at this point in time in the year, and we are starting to plan some fun end-of-the-year activities for our students. So one thing this week, and I don't know if I'm stealing Tom's thunder here, but the graduating senior class is coming over on Friday, they're going to do a senior walk, which I'm really excited about. I just happened to see a really cute video on Facebook earlier, and then I got an email message when I came to, to school today, so that was exciting to see that. And then we are planning a fun field day, and if you guys are available that day, that would be fantastic if you come see. It's a wonderful celebration, field day at the end of the school year. We are celebrating at the very last day of school, if the weather is nice, otherwise our idea is going to be an earlier date. And so in the morning, I think about 8:30, we are going to do a kindergarten versus first grade kickball game, so very serious, and then we've got some stations, some fun activities for students to go around and participate, and then we're going to do a whole school picnic lunch. So that is what we're straight now going on.
Thank you.
All right, I'm talking about safety patrol. We just got back from our most recent encounters and ventures to Wisconsin Dells last week on Thursday. We took the fifth-grade students to Wisconsin Dells for their, it was the seventy-sixth annual, and so every year they send a lot of safety patrol students on Thursday and/or Friday. And so every year, they send a lot of safety patrol students on Thursday and/or Friday. We went down Thursday, started with a boat tour, which we signed up for the regular boat tour. And when we were getting on the bus, we ended up getting on a, one that went much faster than the regular one, so. So we, we didn't mess this up. And it was actually one you could purchase, it was an added bonus. So they must've just wanted to give us something cool, so they did that. So that was the start of our morning. We get there, I was like, I don't know what else is gonna go wrong here. But after that, we went to Wizard Quest and then had lunch. And then we went mini-golfing and finished the day at the Wildlife Zoo. And the, the students were awesome. There was 55 fifth grade students and they were very well-respected, well-behaved. We got lots of compliments from every place we went. And it's very, I mean, I would say it's structured in a sense of the scheduling, but it's very unstructured. And, I mean, the, the places are huge. And so it was great to see them be super-successful in that environment, which was no surprise because they are safety patrol members. But it was just kind of a reward for all the good work that they've done this year. And actually, on our way home, we got stuck in traffic because there was construction between Landon Station and Mossin. And we were going about five miles an hour for a little bit of stretch. And it was 80 degrees. And all of a sudden, we were at standstill and there was probably a couple hundred bees right outside the front of the bus, just swarming the bus. And add that to the boat tour list, and we had a sweet trip here. But fortunately, we didn't have to worry about any of these things and we made it home safely. It was a great wrap-up to what's been a super-assome, successful safety patrol. We have 125 members total. The second round, we added about 15 more students that wanted to be a part of, of it. Scheduling has been tough because there are so many kids, but they've, they've been super-excited to do the posts, so. It was, it was a great year with safety patrol. We're looking forward to the last couple of weeks. And then we also had one little trip where we take them for ice cream, one grade, fourth grade'll go, and then fifth grade'll go. It's just kind of their last little treat for the work that they did, so it's fun.
Thank you.
Hearing everyone, as you saw, Ms. A, Sarah Anderson, was recognized tonight for all her good, hard work with junior achievements, so appreciate all she does with that. Any other eighth grade teacher for setting that up. And Esther Wyble, too, for helping out with the coordination. So I, I think it was worthwhile mentioning that Sarah had some suggestions on how to improve it because a few years ago, it didn't go over so well in the classroom and there's some management issues. And Sarah came up with some better ideas, and she does know kids. And so they took those to heart and provided a much better experience with our eighth graders. And in addition to bringing in community members. So all that works really well, it ties in well with all the work staff does with Career Day in the school as well. We had Friday night, the first-ever eighth-grade recognition night prior to the eighth-grade dance, which was prior to the eighth-grade lock-in, which I passed on. But I, I didn't do the lock-in, but I did, I was at the dance and I was present to assist with the eighth-grade recognition night. It was really pretty cute. It was, you know, a little bit clunky at first and they were having done it before. But it was wonderful to see so many parents out in the London Theater audience and all, nearly all the students were there. And everybody was recognized for something. Even if maybe you didn't pass a class, your attendance was good, or you took part in FIAID without having missed a class, whatever it may be. So it was nice to see, have everything, every student had something was handed to them if they crossed the stage and others with more than one item. So again, hats off to Annie Recov for being the main coordinator behind that and getting the ball rolling on that eighth-grade team. So that was really a, a fun time. That went from about 6 till 7:30, and then the dance, 7:30 to 9:30. And then the lock-in till 8 o'clock the next morning, so everything went well.
Dave, has the lock-in happened before? I know the eighth-grade dance has been going a couple of years, but has there been a lock-in before?
The, they used to have an annual eighth-grade dance and then it went by the wayside for quite a few years. And then some noisy parent of the students of the class of 2016 thought that maybe his kids, Jack Aaron Rue and, and Haley Collins and Bob, and some of the others might want to re, restart that. You didn't have an eighth-grade dance teacher, Kyle?
I don't think so.
Yeah, because you were, what grade year are you?
Oh, seven.
Oh, seven, yes. So there was a break there, but then the kids got going and Sarah Anderson picked up the ball again and got the kids. So ever since then, they've been doing the eighth-grade dance. And the lock-in, you're right, is relatively new, it's been the last three to five years. They started doing the lock-in. I, I, boy, I just get nervous about middle school boys and girls staying overnight in the same building together. I think there's lots of supervision, doors are locked, cell phones are collected or monitored. And they do a really, really nice job and it's very enjoyable, at least for the kids. So that was a great, a great night on Friday. No, no fire alarms went off or anything, and just, just a great night. A couple of other things, oh, middle school spring choir concert is tomorrow night under the guidance of Sam Walker from the high school who teaches the seventh and eighth-grade choirs. And then Stephanie Coles at the, from the elementary school who teaches the sixth-grade choir. So looking forward to that tomorrow night, 7:00 PM at the London Theater. And one thing I wanted to share from Les Dockstool, a longtime social studies teacher who's retiring this year. And he wanted to share a bit about Newzella. And Newzella is a, it's a web-based technology tool that provides with a subscription to schools, a wide, wide variety of articles that can be adjusted to a student's, each student's ability. So some of the topics included, and before you'd asked, one of the topics was Fortnite. And so I, I read the article and, and it doesn't talk about how to beat the game or which bloody weapons you need to collect in order to beat one guy or another. But it talks about the background of Fortnite and the technology that goes into it. And it was, you know, maybe three or four short paragraphs, but there aren't too many 14-year-old boys who wouldn't get their attention when they hear an article on Fortnite. So some of those articles are really, really good. And there, it comes along with materials used to assess students, to provide them work and practice in the classroom. And Mr. Dockstool writes that the middle school social studies PLC, as well as grade-level classrooms, have been using Newzella articles over the past couple of years to support curricular units, cross-curricular units. And as a PLC, grades six, seven, and eight assign selected current event-related articles and the assessment questions that go along with each article. So it's, it's a competition. So the sixth-grade social studies classrooms would read the article at their level, the seventh grade, then the eighth grade. And then they would take the test, the assessment afterwards and which, see which grade level got the higher, highest of the three grades. And I think every time they did it, every two or three weeks, sixth grade always wins. So they're, they're doing a nice job. Mr. Fenton doesn't want them to forget about that. And Mr. Perman, you know him, is pretty competitive, so Jake wants to get his scores up. Anyways, Steph put us on that, that I've got the ball rolling. And now we do a yearly subscription to Newzella. So last but not least, we have our final orange frog pancake breakfast coming up on Friday, so be welcome to pop in if you'd like. This is, I've been trying to do one a month, didn't work out quite that well. So we've been doing at least one a quarter for the school year, and very well-received by staff. We have on the menu French toast and sausage. And we're getting better at setting up the, the teachers' rooms because we get a lot of circuits that are blowing in there. I mean, there, there are things plugged in everywhere, but we're safe. And we don't dease chain anything. We don't want to end up on Lance's slide, you know what you're saying? That's, that's been pretty interesting to do that. And, and staff are also excited about the, the senior walk coming up on Friday.
All right, boy, how do you follow that up? Well, they all took my thunder here with the senior walk, so. But that is a, developing a little tradition, it's, it's very nice that the seniors are looking forward to that. And we were thinking about, or talking to Dave about his lock-in. So we had a couple of teachers volunteer. We have a lock-in on Friday for all the high school students. We got two chaperones and we lock them all in. You wanna come? No, no lock-in, just like, ever, ever.
My at-risk hat is like lighting up tonight.
But we, we do have, and there's tons and tons of stuff going on at the high school, but you can look at the calendar and see the baccalors and the scholarships and the, this and the that and the graduations. But one thing I do want to highlight is May 31st, Friday, May 31st, if you don't have plans for lunch, you are all invited up to London Park, the upper shelter in the band show. And we're gonna start at about, we're gonna start a little bit early, we're gonna start at 11 o'clock. Actually, I'm gonna start with a guy at about 3 o'clock in the morning. And I'm gonna back up now a little bit before I tell you what's gonna happen. So it was the beginning of the school year, our green team, Mrs. Knodel is the advisor for the green team. And she got a very active group of students together this year who were really motivated to try to reduce the, reduce the garbage and trash that the school district produces. They kind of got it started a little bit last year. So some of the things they've done are to separate the milk cartons from the rest of the trash. And they did education all the way from K up to 12. They, they got extra containers, they painted the containers, they sent out information. They actually had volunteers stand next to the containers and tell the kids when they came, put your milk carton in here and then dump the rest of your stuff here. That, and then they went one step further and they said, you know, we have a lot of food that's being wasted. And so they talked to Mr. Anderson, one of our science teachers, and Alan Thompson, who's one of the FFA members of our students. And they, both of those families own pigs and other animals. And they said, well, let's collect some of that food and we'll feed it to these animals. And so since about the middle of the year at the high school, and I believe some of the other schools, they have a container where the vegetables and fruits and so on, kids dump those into, into that tray, put their milk containers in another container, their plastic in another. We've reduced, I don't know the numbers exactly, but I know it's about two or three dumpster pickups that we are no longer doing at the high school compared to the beginning of the school year. So the other side of that is that's a lot of food that's been going to these animals. Well, one of those animals on the Thompson farm is well over 400 pounds right now. But the good news is, he's not gonna get much bigger, she's not gonna get much bigger. On the 29th, Mr. Thompson will take them up to Falls Meats and they're gonna butcher the hog. The next day, we have a guy who's a retired military guy who roasts pigs for a hobby. And he's got the whole outfit. And he's coming up, he's gonna load the pig up. I'm gonna go up to Falls Meats and help load the pig up. And then Thursday night, he and I are gonna sit up at London Park all night long roasting a pig. And then 11 o'clock, we're gonna serve that pig to the, to the students. So they diverted the food and it's coming right back. Mrs. Knodel sent out, now we were sensitive to some, you know, some students, I mentioned, some students said, you know, have a problem with knowing where their, where their food comes from. And so Mrs. Knodel sent a, a survey out today because when the, when the roaster guy was here talking to Connie and me, he said, okay, apple or no apple? And so we sent a survey out. Mrs. Knodel's survey says, do you want to have the pig's head with the apple sitting next to the food? Do you want to have a picture of the pig's head with an apple sitting next to the food or no pig's head? So we'll see how that survey turns. Long story short, be welcome to come and join us for the pancake breakfast. Also, at the same time in the band show, we'll be having our variety show sponsored by the Stripes Class. We've organized a variety show, so that'll be going on at the band show during the picnic. That's what we're doing.
They worked closely with Connie Seaver as well, so they've been working through this whole process to make sure it's meaningful to the environment.
And the, the, the pig roasting guy, he passed with flying colors, Connie's in paraplegia. Sanitation and so on, so we gotta build a good house.
I do, but I'm not really sure how to follow these two up. Other than to say, the Nexus Boys have been very, very busy in more ways than one. They have been really, Connie, when Connie presented tonight, what a proud moment because she has done so much. And that was her project from the very beginning. That was just a vision she had. And she wanted to know how to include more than just the students over at the high school. And so including the Nexus group. And they've done a great job of building and helping with that. But it's just been such an amazing project. And when you look at, she's working on her special ed license because she's under an emergency license and she's working really hard to get that license. And so this is just a big part of that community piece when you look at community partnerships. And it's just been an amazing project that she's taken on. So that was very, very cool. If you've driven by Get Heart at all, if you have seen that the whole yard is now turned into the preliminary parts of a garden. And I, wood up everywhere and plants everywhere. And we toured about two weeks ago, we took the boys and we toured two Amish farms to really take a tour and learn more about how the growing goes from the beginning on up. And so we toured, we got some different plants. And so every day, they've been working out there, doing a lot with the planting. Brad is really big into hydroponics and so they're learning about all different kinds of things. So we, if you come into our building, we have plants growing, we have a green room, greenhouse room. We've got plants all over there, we've got hydroponics and plants grow in the water and we've got all kinds of things going on. So it's pretty exciting. And the students have really had a great year and I really feel like it's been a good year. So, but stop over and look at what we've got going on out in our yard. It's, it's a work and to practice. Back to the Association of Boarders. I attended the spring workshop down at CISA. This was a response from our members. We used to do a statewide spring workshop and members wanted it delivered more locally. So the WASB staff kind of going around the state and our Western region had posted at CISA. And we had, I don't know, probably 20 people from different school districts that came. There's an Equity supposium added to the Leadership Academy this year, which is going to be in Appleton, July 12th. But that's a follow-up to that from our Equity theme. And will hopefully be something that's repeated. Convention planning is happening and we're also continuing on with Equity there, too. Because as you know, we just don't do Equity, it's something that's just progressively repeated, always need to progress it. And I'm the chairperson of the convention planning this year, so there's anything that we can do. We've, we've got applications for workshops and stuff, so. And I just highlighted, just set them that way. You get lots of mail and electronic communications about the budget and everything that's happening. I think they cover themselves all that way. Any questions or want to share, and what else is done? Why don't you nominate people for some of the awards that, yours, the teachers, I see, I look at it, I watch it. Does he, whether, that being, well, you can do that anytime. I know there's, there's a deadline for like the business officials is coming up. The Teacher of the Year is hand-placed, that project, that's really important. And we'll, they're all, they're all, and I'll say. Future agenda items, we, we need to meet and have for the organization and for the board. And finalize that, any other business. So, thank you. All favors A.I. I oppose. We are adjourned.